Councilmember James?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Mayor Buttem Ferguson?
Here.
Mayor Bain?
Here.
And Councilmember Hamm is absent. And the first item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. Speakers may address council once during either oral communications part one or part two. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications part one, with each speaker being allotted three minutes which should give his or her presentation.
First speaker is Rick Lefler, followed by Brad Malamud, and then Joe Janis.
Okay, council, I'm going to read this because I want this to be accurate. I hate reading it, but I want this to be somewhat accurate. So before we hear about the specifics of our council's homeless plan, I'd like to give a brief summary of the case that got us here, the 2017 Martin versus Boise. Robert Martin came to Boise every other week to visit his minor children. Since he had no place to stay, he would camp in a public park. Since this violated the city ordinance, police began citing him and five other individuals who were also camping. They were offered shelter, but the shelter required some type of religious participation. A suit was filed claiming cruel and unusual punishment. So segueing forward to the brief part of the Ninth District's majority decision, I'll quote, "As long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter." That's an interesting point about having a false premise that they had no choice. I don't know if that was a loophole they were trying to give us, but once you establish that it's not a choice, or their choice is to be on the street, does that preclude us from arresting them? I'm not sure. Now, how you can have a false premise that everyone that's homeless doesn't have a choice? Anyway, it's something to think about. This is a case about sleeping overnight and having a place to do so. How it expanded into allowing tent cities everywhere blocking public access, how did it get there? I doubt that that was the intent of the Ninth District in their ruling. In fact, the ruling additionally states, and here's a very key part of the ruling, "We do not suggest that a jurisdiction with insufficient shelter can never criminalize the act of sleeping outside." Think about that. That's from the Ninth District. "Even where shelter is unavailable, an ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at a particular time or in a particular location might well be constitutionally permissible." Well, for the past seven months, it doesn't seem like our enforcement has adopted that opinion as part of the Martin versus Boise. It seems clear that the enforcement plan our council is about to adopt is completely permitted under the Martin case. It will be interesting to see what commitment we receive from our enforcement resources as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next is Brad Malamud, followed by Joe Janis.
Hello, council. Last week's council meeting was eye-opening. I expected the new council would promote open government, transparency, and explore and vote for cost savings. I was so wrong. The move for an RFP for city attorney and litigation attorney to separate RFP was turned down. Shame on everybody that voted against it. This is only exploratory. It's only a request to find out information. Why would this council deny going forward? We look at everything else. We hire experts on everything, but not when it comes to our city attorney and a $2 million yearly expense? You need to revisit this and vote for those two RFPs. Nobody's asking anybody in council to vote to change the lawyer that represents our city. But we are seeing if there's less expense or better options. I can understand why any delay is necessary. In fact, no delay is necessary for that. Next, there's a straightforward open government request by me and I think Laura, but I'm not sure about that, to allow one council member to place an item on the agenda. That seems so fair and obvious, it's hard for me to believe anybody would be against it. Also, as I've told Dan, I think in a letter, many other cities allow the mayor independently to put things on the agenda. We don't even have that right in our town. So our agenda, so everybody knows, is controlled solely and exclusively by the city manager. And this has been done way before James was here. This is 30 years now or something. And James was the first one ever to tell me where the rules were. I couldn't get an answer from any other city manager how an agenda was created, so I give him props for that. I'm asking you tonight to revisit this again, that one council member, I noticed Chris is near, but Kathy, Laura, Jean, and Dan, we voted on you because we trust you, every one of you. So if you want to put something on the agenda, even if I don't like it, or one of the other council members don't like it, it should be open to the public to discuss it, and each council member should be allowed to bring up those things that he or she is interested in. I mean, that's a whole idea of democracy. That's a whole idea of open government. Why I think virtually every council member, I believe except for Laura, I'm not sure, voted against that is beyond me. Again, I ask you to revisit this again today. We need more discussion in this town. We need critical issues reviewed. And if a council member feels it's important, then I think, and especially if the mayor feels it's important, he should have the unilateral right to put it on. That's, to me, even more important than each individual council member, but I would go for both of them because I think it's that important that if somebody cares, that an open discussion. That's not to say that that issue will be passed or approved, but it should be discussed. Finally, I want to thank the city attorney for returning his legal analysis to me. I will just say this, I believe he's wrong, but that's what the law is all about. So thank you very much. And my Christmas present to you is I won't be here next week.
Thank you, Brad. Next is Joe Janis. Mr. Janis?
Hi, council. You know, Brad's a real tough act to follow, especially when you don't agree with him, and I do. When this election process began, I started watching some council meetings to see what some of the current issues were, and I discovered that a few residents believe our city manager and our city attorney should not be working for our city, and they're pretty vocal about it. And some people have said we should get rid of our city attorney. Every week, a few speakers try to discredit and villainize these two guys. It is beginning to look like an organized effort, and I believe this needs to be addressed. Our silence is condoning. In all my dealings with James and Scott, I have found them to be nothing but professional, honest, and ethical. I believe James received an outstanding evaluation from last council. I have been using city services for close to 35 years now, and at one time now, I dealt with every city department, planning, building, engineering, finance, water, code enforcement, CM's office, city clerks, city attorneys. During the past five years, I have had meetings with many department heads on several issues, and I believe the city has been run very efficiently under James' direction. Just last month, I spent time with the building department, and customer service was absolutely fantastic. Most of the things that James and Scott have been accused of has happened in the past when another council was directing their actions. Just as I encourage people to judge all of you not on past allegations, but on your present and future performance, I ask you to give these guys the same courtesy. The city manager and city attorney are here to serve at your pleasure and your direction. They will be insuborn if they don't, just as they would have been if they were insuborn to the other council members. Unfortunately, we live in a sue-happy society. The very people who complain the most about the money spent on defending lawsuits have been the first to sue us, and then, of course, they blame you guys for it. If the city failed to defend lawsuits from the sober-living companies and vacation rental industry, life in our neighborhoods would have changed drastically. It was money well spent. My point is this, it was up to the old council to decide which suits the city should have defended, not the city attorney or the city manager. Now it's your watch and your choice on which lawsuits will be defended. I am against spending city time and money to agendize any item just to prove a past decision during another council's range was a wrong one. Talk about a waste of time and money. This is a council chamber, not a kangaroo courthouse, as some people would like it to be. Evaluate these guys on their present and future performance. If you insist on dwelling on past actions while they are under another direction from another council, you are confusing transparency with vengeance. Let's start looking through the windshield and not the rearview mirror. Laura, your actions at last council meeting for calling the city manager because of an honest complaint was really handled poorly. It had nothing to do with being transparent with us citizens. In the future, take time to gather facts and handle matters through proper shell.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comment cards? That's it?
Next item is a report from the assistant city manager concerning development proposals for the southwest corner of Avenida Vista Hermosa and Avenida La Pata.
Good evening, mayor, members of the...
So did you submit a card for oral communications?
Jim G. You submitted a card under item three?
Oh, I meant for speaking. I don't know what...
During oral communications? If so, then please, go ahead.
Well, I don't have anything written.
Jim, go ahead, please.
I don't have anything written here, but I was thinking about the homeless people, and a lot of it is they are victims of society. I went to San Clemente High School, and the coaches, I can't say, are still there. They'd be like, "We don't have your size football uniform. I'm sorry." Or, you know, I'd score a soccer goal, and they'd get mad at me because I didn't look at the goalie, and basically, they didn't have a net. "Oh, you kicked the ball too far. You could have hurt the goalie. You weren't looking at him." And they would exclude me out of sports. I mean, at school, there's probably the same type of people there as when I went to that school. And maybe I could have had a scholarship. Who knows? I was left out of sports. You know, my parents got me Kmart clothes and all that stuff, and if it wasn't for my family, like, I might be homeless too. And a lot of those people are victims of society because of, like, the shitty schools I went to. And I think that, you know, the government should pay for the homeless shelters because a lot of those people who didn't have money, like I have family and all that, you know, I might be homeless too if it wasn't because of them. I went on to saddleback, and for some reason, they didn't want me to go on to Fuller Ten. I wonder if that had something to do with... I mean, there were people out there, I can't really mention any names, but who were, I think, the kids of police or parents, I mean, like, teachers, and they had it in for me, and they talked shit behind my back, and, you know, there's people who committed suicide.
Jim, real quick, a point of order, if you could not curse during the meetings. I appreciate it.
Did I say a bad... Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
But, I mean, a lot of the homeless people are victims because of the... I'm not saying any of you people here, but, you know, it's people like in power who then, you know, their kid, like, they got in an argument with somebody else, or, you know what I mean? They had it in for them. Like, when I was 14, before they became the Orange County Sheriff's Department, they tried to get me arrested. And I learned in business law, saddleback, it's something like zero to six, you can't get arrested, seven to 13, you needed a judge's signature, and then 14 or older, they don't need any of that. So they waited till I was 14, and they tried to get me arrested. It really pissed me off and left me emotionally disturbed on that. People would gang up on me, and like, in junior high, I had a bunch of Mexicans who ganged up on me because I was white, and I got suspended for pushing them back. And I was supposed to go to the vice principal, and my mom's like, "How is he supposed to defend himself? He can't even push them back when they're ganging up on them?" Somebody had it in for me. I'd get suspended for stuff like that, and I've heard a lot of other things like that happening to other people. And I think a lot of the reasons why you have so many homeless people is a lot of the people who run over the, you know, look over the others, they're trash, and, you know, they do people like me in, and it's society's fault. So, okay, thanks.
Any other? Okay, all right. Michael? Sorry about that.
All good. All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, Mike Johnston, management analyst with the city manager's office. The item before you this evening pertains to the development of a 2.29 acre city-owned parcel located at the southwest corner of Avenida Vista Hermosa and Avenida La Pata. If you'll recall, the city council meeting, at the city council meeting on June 18th, 2019, the council approved an exclusive listing agreement with CBRE, and since that time, CBRE has listed the property available for both sale and lease. Once listed, the city received a total of 15 qualified offers. Staff then worked with CBRE to create a shortlist of the three best offers based on the highest and best proposed use for the land, the total purchase price, and ongoing tax revenue to the city, and lastly, the developer's experience. During the closed session, meeting on December 3rd, the city council directed staff to agendize the three recommended development proposals, so each of the recommended developers could have the opportunity to share their plans with the public in an open forum. The purchase price of the attached proposals range anywhere from $6 million to $7 million, and the ground lease proposals range anywhere from $100,000 to $325,000 annually. Additionally, it's estimated that the city would receive anywhere from $180,000 to $320,000 in annual sales tax revenue, and roughly $15,000 to $25,000 in annual property tax revenue from the proposed developments. So with that said, I'm going to invite Justin McMahon with our commercial brokerage team up to speak in greater detail about the proposal process to date, and then after Justin shares about the proposal process, we'll invite up each of the developers. We'll have Fountainhead Development come up first, and then Property Nine Development, and then lastly, Hezlin Holdings will share their proposal with the city and the community.
And, yeah? Sorry, and Michael, real quick, and I know before you invite the proposal, the applicants up, can you just share a little bit more of the public? And I know I'm putting you on the spot here, so the best you can do is the best you can do.
Got it.
In terms of sort of the number of proposals that we got and what the process was to kind of whittle that down? And I know the staff report says it, and thank you for the staff report, but if you could also share for the folks at home kind of what factors we looked at in getting to the point we're at tonight?
Yeah. So initially, the property was listed by CBRE, again, for either sale or lease. We wanted to basically get the widest range of offers that we could possibly get and look at all options for the proposed site, and we received initially 15 proposals, and those proposals ranged from everything from quick service restaurants to gas stations, car washes. We even had some Montessori schools proposed, charter schools, even an assisted living facility. And then, once we received those 15 proposals, what we did is we sat down with CBRE, and we relied on both their expertise, having worked with local developers in the past, and the city's own evaluation of the proposals. And basically, we ranked them based off of highest and best use for the site, because the city, over the years, has reached out to the public with this available property and has heard from residents in the area what they'd like to see at the site, so we took that into consideration. We also looked at the developer's experience, so had the developers worked in Orange County before? What was their success in the past? What other types of projects had they done, these types of projects, in the past? And then, we also looked at what would be the revenue to the city? So what were they proposing for a sale? What were they proposing for a ground lease? And what would their ongoing sales tax revenue look like to the city? And so, once we took into consideration all of those factors, we ranked each of the developer's proposals based off of that criteria, and then that list was brought back to the city council in closed session and shared with the council. And then, the council provided direction to come back with a shortlist of proposals to which we shared with them, and then that's kind of how we got to where we're at today, where we're sharing the final three proposals that we brought forth to the council as recommended.
Great. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. So who's our... So I think what we'll do is we'll hear from the folks proposing these projects, then have the public comment after that.
Correct. Yeah, so we'll have CBRE come up, Justin McMahon, and he'll talk a little bit more into the detail of the process that I just described, and then we'll have each of the developers come up and present their proposals.
Thank you. Mr. McMahon?
Good evening, Mayor Bain, and the city council members and city staff. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm actually a resident of the Forrester Highlands neighborhood, so kind of exciting to be working with you all. So to kind of dig into a little bit more detail as to what our process was and some of the timelines, myself and my brokerage partner were selected in June to work with the city on this project. An exclusive listing agreement was approved at council shortly thereafter. Once we executed that, we were given a list, basically a list of 45, I think, interested parties that have inquired about this very site in the, you know, months and years preceding our involvement. We reached out to all of them first. Some of them wrote proposals, some of them did not. Simultaneously with that, we created our marketing materials. We launched our marketing campaign, including signage, all of which was approved by the city. We reached out to the existing interest list and also got it out to the wider market to not only developers and owners of real property, but also tenants that may have interest because what comes with tenants as developers. So we received calls, new emails from these interested parties. Some of them made offers, and then we received 15 offers by October 1st of this year. At that time, the city council had a closed session meeting to review the offers on the 15th of October and selected the top three offers. The three finalists, all of which are here and are very qualified to develop this type of project, were asked to submit a final proposal with both a lease scenario, a long-term ground lease, and a purchase of the fee property. And those offers were asked to submit offers on October 17th by November 4th. So from the offers received on November 4th, what you'll see today is based upon the offers we received then, and then, obviously, that leads us to today, where we are going to hear from the finalists and get to see a little bit of what they're planning. So if there's any questions for me, I'd love to answer it, but otherwise, we can get going.
Any questions? All right. Great. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and invite our first...
Yes, so we'll have Fountainhead Development come up and give the first proposal.
I'm Craig Smith, and we're Fountainhead Development, and I thought it would be a good idea for, since our project features Platinum Energy operating a gas station. Platinum already operates in San Clemente? Where exactly is your station?
Camino de las Maras, the 76th off of the freeway.
And David also owns, he is the owner of Platinum Energy, 130 service stations across Southern California, and also is the owner and creator of Bliss Car Wash, which is featured. See the frog? That's Bliss. And then, our national coffee company is Starbucks. So with that, David, why don't you walk us through a little bit about Bliss?
Good evening, everyone. I truly appreciate the opportunity to be here. Bliss Car Wash, it took us a little bit over six years to develop this concept. We've been involved with operating car washes for the past 24 years and operating service stations in the past 37 years. So Bliss Car Wash, we basically got the concept of washing cars. That has been around. That is the story. But we started focusing on the message within the story, which is about giving back environmental responsibility. The environmental responsibility, we live in the desert, and water has always been in the forefront of what we've been doing. So we have developed a technology that is only belongs to Bliss to measure the freshwater consumption per vehicle real time, and through that, we've been able to reduce the amount of water consumption per car wash to a level that no one can even come close to it. So we are very proud of that. Having a relationship with our planet Earth, and we have developed our own products, quote-unquote chemicals, to wash the cars, which they are all biodegradable, because eventually, they end up back into the planet Earth. So we are very proud of that as well. Then, the giving back. These are all the messages within our story. The water. So we picked up the poorest country in the world, which is Niger, West Africa, and every time we open up a Bliss Car Wash, we drill one well, fresh water, which supplies fresh water to 800 to 1,000 people. These people, unfortunately, they live in an environment that 80% of their children die before age eight due to the contaminated water. So this year, we have opened up seven Bliss locations. We have drilled seven wells, has impacted close to about 7,000 peoples. The Wounded Warriors is another outreach of programs that we currently have, we're partnering up with them to support our veterans, and we are very proud of that. And, of course, the community, you know, but for the past 24 years, we've always been involved with the community that we work in, you know, Las Vegas water, Las Vegas municipal, Las Vegas school system, it's been, we've been really working closely, and we have raised over $500,000 for the various programs at their school system. So we have a few designs at Bliss. This is more modern, design number one, design number two, but we're really... But we really want to focus on what we are proposing for San Clemente. And we know that San Clemente is embracing the Spanish colonial architectural, and this is what we are offering.
Yeah, we're, okay, see where the murals, see the little esophits that have the hollow part? You can't see that little tiny print, but what it says is, we understand there is a movement in the city. Every one of those locations is going to feature a tile mosaic of a famous person in San Clemente.
So, this is the car wash facade that we are proposing. Of course, there are two elevations, and we have developed the same kind of, the same style of architectural for the services station. And by the way, the services station is a reverse layout, and we've done that because we felt that this would be something that the community will embrace, to have the building at the corner rather than the pump islands at the corner. And this would be, again, unfortunately, we ran out of time to put color to it, but again, Spanish colonial.
Okay, I got it. So, this is our site plan. And on the corner is the 76th Station, the convenience store with a reverse, so the retail building is towards the intersection with the dispensers to the east, and it's Starbucks over on the, up towards the fire station. And then, there's Bliss. There's a layout for Bliss. Again, David currently, Platinum Energy currently operates in San Clemente at that location. Hopefully, some people in the audience are probably familiar. Some background on Fountainhead Development. We have been in business 25 years, and we are, we've done quite a, we've had very good success working in partnership with cities on more than a handful of projects. It's a good fit for us. We're very tenant-friendly. We look, and we were founded initially to look at development from a tenant's perspective. So, to look at things from a city perspective, it's a pretty easy adjustment for us, and we find it a very good natural fit, and have had good success at it. And, is that five minutes?
Goes by quickly. Try three. It's very quick. So, process, this is the first time I've gone through one of these proposals, so thank you for the presentation. I think it'd be appropriate, just really quickly, if there are any immediate questions from the dais before we invite the next group up, if there's any questions. Councilman Ward?
I just have a quick question. With the Spanish colonial revival that you showed, that elevation, where would it be that you would put the signage for the Bliss Car Wash? Did you look into that?
Well, excuse me. That would be part of the sign package. We really didn't drill down, and we just wanted to come up with a design just to show you how we're thinking and working with the city staff to develop the sign package.
Okay, so you're still open to suggestions from our staff on signage?
For sure. Absolutely.
Okay, so, we aren't being asked to decide between any of these designs tonight. It's just a concept.
Just ideas.
Could you verify, just so the public can hear it also, what the purchase price would be and what you're offering per year to the city as far as what we expect in revenue?
The purchase price is $7 million. Conversely, if we lease the property from the city, it's $325,000 annually.
That's an alternative if you didn't purchase the property?
Yes.
The lease price? Okay. So, what could the city expect as far as revenue from this development?
You know, we've submitted all that information to the city, and the city has it all, and we were told to concentrate on different components of the project, so I don't have that sheet in front of me tonight.
Okay.
But the city, City has all the information.
Okay, we'll ask staff to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember James?
What's the square footage of the C store?
About 3,000 square feet.
Is that about the same as your store on?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I just was going to make clear to the public that, and I appreciate you folks giving us some idea of kind of what it would look like and all that, but you would obviously still have to go through the entitlement process with the city, design review, planning commission, all that. So, all of what you saw is sort of a proposal, but subject to our normal entitlement process, which your term sheet sort of allotted for in terms of timeframe. My only question was, you're here in part because the price you came back with was the highest that we got. I say in part because that wasn't the only consideration, but how confident are you folks in sort of the pro forma that you put together and sort of justifying that price? Because what I know I don't want to see is a whole lot of re-trading and going back to a place where we're now back to where we were with some of our other folks, because we tried to be fair to all.
Highly confident.
Feel the same?
Right.
All right. All right. Great. I don't have any other questions right now.
One more. The Starbucks, is that just walk-up and drive-through, or is there, is there a, not a dining room, but a...
No, no. It's actually, it's a good question. There is, that Starbucks as designed is larger than the average Starbucks. So, in addition to walking through it, walking into a typical drive-through, which has a cafe and has this dining area, that's, that one is particularly large.
Sorry, I lied. Final question for me. Do you have any other questions? You said that Starbucks is your sort of national partner.
No.
So, we, obviously, when we listed the property, developers come to us. Do you expect that Starbucks will be one of the retailers there, or are you going to open up that process to save on local entities?
They have confirmed interest. We designed, we designed and developed the first drive-through Starbucks in California.
Okay.
We've done almost 30 of them, and we've confirmed their interest in the site.
Okay. All right. No more questions for me for now.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Mayor Bain, if I may, I would just like to address Kathy's question from earlier about the ongoing tax revenue that the city can expect. So, Fountainhead has included in their development proposal an estimated $290,000 per year in annual sales tax revenue to the city. Now, that $290,000 number includes a $75,000 annual contribution from the car wash operator because car washes are not a taxable service. So, that's something that the car wash operator is throwing in, in addition to what we can expect to see from this convenience store and the sale of gas at the location.
Thank you. That's helpful to me, because I was wondering where that was coming from.
Is that forever? Is there a sunset on that?
So, the way that they're proposing it is in perpetuity, and there's a 10% escalator that's included every five years. And that's, that 10% escalator is on the $75,000 car wash tax contribution. Okay, great. All right, so with that said, we'll go ahead and invite up Property Nine Development to give their proposal.
Tonawal, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Michael Bigangji, Property Nine Development, my partner Brian Johnson. We're here with actually another partner of ours, Mike Sater of Sater Oil International, who is a very decorated, award-winning ARCO and A&amp;P M operator, franchisee, as well as other flags and other brands. What we're going to do, we're going to go through our presentation, similar to Fountainheads. What you're going to see is basically a summary, flexibility, creativity of what we can assemble. But on ours, you're going to see projections, a site plan of what actually does work to code as of right now, and, you know, meets initial criteria to move on to the next steps should we be given that opportunity. So, first and foremost, just a little summary, you know, we really try to instill value in every way that we can, from a community standpoint, economic standpoint, obviously, you know, we're business owners as well. There has to be that component. But we really like to take into consideration what community outreach is looking for, input, pros, cons. You know, we really try to be open in evaluating certain aspects when it comes to these types of projects, which we've worked with municipalities in the past to address these issues and components, and feel confident that, you know, you're going to see here in a short bit, we can, on a 35-year analysis, we can project the city to receive about $20 million in revenue from a tax generation standpoint. With that, you know, we like to take into consideration some details. You know, we know the lighting ordinance, the dark sky initiative within San Clemente is a very important component. You know, we're incorporating solar and electric car charging stations, which includes golf cart parking and charging, just due to the proximity of Toledo being nearby. Also, you know, with some energy and environmentally friendly design components as well, not to mention being compliant with the beautiful design that is unique to San Clemente. So, going through this, I'm going to break things down a little bit, go over scenarios in which our preference is to purchase. $6 million, that's where the number works. We've done enough deals where we know what numbers work, what numbers don't work. We actually have a unique component that we'll get to here in a second, and then we'll talk about our analysis as well. We have similar scenarios, I think you'll see the whole night, similar scenarios in which we have a gas component, we have a car wash component, we also have a QSR coffee component. One is preferable, one economically pencils better and more functionally than the other, and I'll get into that here in a second. I'm going to skip over this just for a sec here. So, we have a development plan one from a fee simple standpoint, which is referenced to be 100% acquisition of the 2.2 acre site, which ends up being about 1.93 acres net usable. We like to do a lot of our due diligence beforehand and figure out exactly what our envelope is going to be, therefore, or, you know, we don't run the risk of cramming so much into one projected or proposal and then realize, we can't do this, can't do that. And I think you mentioned it, Mayor Bain, you know, we don't want to get through every trading position, which we pride ourselves in with pretty much every deal that we do. So, we're confident in what we have will work. We're confident in the economics. You know, our development plan one from a fee simple standpoint, which is the acquisition of the entire property, is gas component, car wash component. Okay? Then, we have a option B, which would be a gas component, but we can also insert our QSR option as well. Yeah, gas component with a C store. I apologize. It's always going to reference that C store. But we came up with an option one, or option A, option B. I'm going to go back to option A for a second. Gas and convenience store with a cafe inside, that's probably important to note. It would be a sub-tenant similar to Jimmy John's Subway, another recognizable brand, high-end brand, that creates another source of revenue on top of the macro users of the site. Then, you have the second macro user, which would be the car wash, in addition to the gas and C store. Option B would include the QSR instead of the car wash. We get to the same thing from a leasing standpoint. Lease hold interest, really only pencils from an acquisition standpoint of partial, or a partial piece of the property. So, we did bring this into consideration. It does work for us, but highest and best use and ultimate tax generation for the city is going to be from a fee simple standpoint with our preferred uses and users. Fee simple position, with our gas component alone, and Mike Sater will address this as well, there's about $6 million in infrastructure and construction to go in on top of the land. So, putting that type of revenue into a lease hold interest parcel from a business owner's perspective is difficult to choke. We can do it, but does it make sense, functional? No. And does the city ultimately want to be a landlord? We don't, we don't know if that's still the case, but it's possible. Like I said, the improvement cost is $6 million bucks in excess. A million bucks of that is just in the ground, transfer lines, tanks, dual-walk tanks, everything EPA federally regulated, which is changing in 2024. A lot of gas stations have to be converted, so everything would be up to date as far as that concerns. Little summary, there's a bunch of capture avenues that the city's going to see here in a second, whether or not it's a lease hold interest or complete acquisition. I took a, I took two scenarios. I did a 10-year analysis, and I did a 35-year analysis. The 10-year analysis, you're going to see a quick table here that shows our gas component at 430,000 gallons a month of fuel. Okay, we have initial data from a processing source that can support in excess of 430,000 gallons, just given 60,000 cars at the intersection. Of that 430,000 gallons, at $3.85 a gallon, that's roughly $20 million just from gas sales. 1% of that is $200,000 in city tax generation. Okay? So, that's only the fuel component, and that is through 10 dispensers. This is a super pumper. The lapada comes all the way through, right? Everyone's excited about that. This is, this site is going to have heavy traffic. It needs to flow properly. It needs to be able to support the type of volume it's going to, it's going to demand. It needs to be able to supply that. The C store, usually, specifically Mike Sater's, other locations, we look anywhere from $200, $250,000 in C store sales, in which 90% of those sales are approximately, are taxable. We're estimating a significant increase here. I do have a margin of error in here, however, given the traffic in the Vista Hermosa Sports Complex, just the, just the general location of the site, we're looking at somewhere between $250 and in excess of $316, $320,000 a month in C store sales, which is 3.5 to 3.8 million just in C store sales. We're still on the ARCO. We're still on the fuel station. We're still on the C store. The little sub-component of the cafe, for instance, a Jimmy John's, a Subway, a Coffee Bean, which is another one of our users for the QSR. You see how across the street, huge target, amazing target, Starbucks is in the target, right? Similar concept. It's just another source of revenue. It's another component. The car wash, we have a few different scenarios. I'm going to talk about our preference and our, I guess, ultimate economical scenario that's going to benefit, I think, everyone, including the city, including the residents. We have the component with an ARCO, and we are a partner with an ARCO. We are a partner with Mike Sater as an operator. So, at this time, you know, we would be acquiring the site with the preference of being an owner-operator. I think that's key. Daily monitoring, you know, we were able to establish a secondary west coast office here. We have one in Scottsdale, Arizona. We're in San Diego and Irvine with some mobile offices, but we will look to having this be a little bit more personal to us and become part of the community and contribute how we can. The 10-year analysis broken down from acquisition lease hold scenario, $6 million purchase price, roughly $323,000 a year in generation, it's about $10 million over 10 years. You have roughly about the same with a lease hold scenario, slightly less. However, the con is the city is still a landlord. Is that a con? Is it a pro? That's not for us to decide, but the city would be able to double their lump sum initially. I did the same thing, same numbers, and we can, we can have questions about these later when questions come up over 35 years. This is where the average, I want to make it clear, average, this is not the exponential incremental number, is 400, about, we'll call it $400,000 a year in generation over 35 years.
So, real quickly, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to be, I want to be fair to everyone. We gave everybody five minutes, so I want to make sure.
Okay, let me wrap this up. So, I think I've touched on the, the numbers. We have these other users. We have deals in hand. That's key to note, deals in hand, but our preference and our number one frontrunner as far as how we plan to develop the site and the future of it is as an owner-operator with Mike Sater and ARCO. Here's then, and... Here's an initial conceptual design. Councilwoman Ward, it is conceptual, so this is, is open to changes. We're incorporating solar, electric charging stations, the site flows, it matches our site plan, it's decode from a parking standpoint. You can see that you have the access in and out pretty, pretty comfortably and pretty functionally. So I'll leave at that and open to questions about that.
Great. Any questions? Councilman James?
I think not only do we have to look at the financials for the city, but I think we also want to look at how you're going to serve our citizens as well. So Mr. Sater, I have a question for you, sir. You operate how many stations in Southern California?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two. And what's your organizational structure?
We, I'm the owner, I have office in Willemore, our main office is in San Dimas, we have office in Sacramento, we have an office in Washington State. Can I say a couple of things before we dive into what you like to hear? I'd like to give you a brief, little brief.
Well, you're going to infringe on that five minutes, so I'm going to have to cut you off on that.
Okay, go ahead.
So, so your organizational structure, you have an area manager, I assume?
We have.
And what's, what's his span of control? And what's, what area would that area manager have?
Absolutely right. We, we have clerks, we have assistant managers, we have a manager, we have a supervisor, that supervise 10 locations.
That's the question I have.
No more than 10 locations.
You have a regional structure.
We have infrastructure, we've been in business for 40 years. We're a California-based company, and, and we've been awarded many awards.
Yes, sir, you've answered my question, thank you. Nope, I have no other questions.
Any other questions from Dyess? I'll ask the same question I asked before, but obviously I'm concerned about re-trading all that. You folks are confident, you're pro forma, that if you hit the ground, you'd be able to meet the $6 million offer.
Our numbers and what we have, especially from Mike Sater's current operations, as well as the additional proposals that we came to the table with, they do support the $6 million acquisition, as well as a half of three if it ended up being a leasehold partial.
Okay, and you said you had offers in hand, I assume then that the trademarks that you had up there are the folks that are the offers in hand?
Interest from Coffee Bean.
Okay.
Signed deals from 7-Eleven, Fast Five Car Wash, but most importantly, we have a partnership from an Arco preference standpoint of an owner operator, and then that's, that deal is, doesn't require an approval process, it's approved with us. And it moves further down with Arco and the preliminary, I guess, future process.
Arco committed to us that we will, we will accept a credit card in this location, only, not only cash, we all know Arco accept cash only and debit. For this particular location, we're going to accept, they can accept a credit card, and Arco historically pumped in the west coast twice of all our competitors, all of them, I don't want to name anybody. So if they do, if we, if they do 200,000 gallons a month, we do 350 in four. And this is the, the way we run our business, low prices and more, more volume.
I think, I think your question is, does our purchase by support it?
Mm-hmm.
As an owner operator, it's even better.
Okay.
So yes.
Great, all right. No more questions from the Dyess. If we have any more questions, we'll call you guys back up. Thanks a lot for your presentation and for putting that together so quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And with that, we'll invite up our last and final developer, Heslin Holdings, to share their proposal.
Good evening, guys, thank you for your time.
Of course.
My name is Casey McInn, this is Matt Heslin, and John Belenick. We are from Heslin Holdings, named after our principal Matt here. We are a local real estate developer based out of Laguna Hills, and each member of our team is a long-term resident of Orange County. We have developed over 30 projects in Southern California, and recently built a multi-tenant Starbucks drive-through in the city of Huntington Beach. Following is our proposed project for the 2.39 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Avenue Lapada and Vista Hermosa. Our proposed development consists of a Kroger Ralph's gas station with an end-cap drive-through tenant that will either be a quick service restaurant or a coffee tenant. Much like the previous proposals, we have spoken with Starbucks and Coffee Bean, and both have expressed interest in this location. The southern part of our development will be occupied by Fast Five Express. This is our proposed site plan, and this next slide is a close-up view. So as you can see, the northern building will be a multi-tenant building that will contain the gas station convenience store and an end-cap drive-through quick service restaurant or coffee tenant, and that southern standalone building is the Fast Five Express Car Wash that will have free vacuum and drying stations. This next slide is our conceptual architectural elevations that will incorporate the city's Spanish colonial revival theme. This is the gas station elevation, and this slide will represent conceptually what the Fast Five Express building would look like. A little background on Kroger, which is the parent company of Ralph's, Food for Less, Foods Cuts, Smith's Foods, Fries, and nine other brands. They are the largest supermarket chain in the U.S. by revenue, and in terms of their gas stations, they have 1,600 operating gas stations nationwide and one of the largest discount gas chains. Think basically that Costco gas without the extremely long lines. And the advantage of the Ralph's gas over traditional gas stations is their bulk purchasing strength. They sell approximately 5% of all fuel consumption nationally, which allows them to pass on the price savings to all customers. In addition, Ralph's preferred customers also receive cross-shopping savings of up to a dollar off per gallon of purchases up to 35 gallons. And this proposed fuel station would service the customers of the two nearby Ralph's grocery stores, Tolega and the location on the freeway, Camino de Australia. And the sales from this Ralph's gas station will increase the health and long-term viability of both of those grocery stores, thereby increasing the current sales tax received from those two grocery stores. We are the preferred developer for Kroger fuels, so this Ralph's gas is exclusive to our development. Here's some background on Fast Five Express. They were voted the best express car wash in Orange County by the LA Times. They are the largest express car wash in Southern California, washing over 2.9 million cars per year. Each facility is equipped with over a million of quieter, cleaner, state-of-the-art wash and dry equipment, and what sets them apart from gas station car washes is that those car washes only have a tunnel length of usually 75 feet, which allows for only one car to be washed at a time, which creates significant delays. Think of the mobile car wash down on Pico and how convenient that car wash is. Fast Five, on the other hand, has a full-length tunnel, anywhere from 109 to 150 feet, which allows them to wash eight to 10 cars at one time with wash times of five minutes or less. Basically, the longer the tunnel also means the better the wash. Fast Five is also one of the market leaders in environmentally friendly car washes. All water is used, filtered, and recycled on-site, which saves millions of gallons of water each year. Absolutely no residue drains into the city's drain, storm drain system, with all grease, oils, and solids collected and hauled off-site to a collection center for environmental waste. All soaps are biodegradable and produce no odor, and they recently received the Water Star Award from the Irvine Ranch Water District, was based, which was based on their water conservation and extra steps they take to limit their impact on the environment. You know, after looking at the other proposals over the weekend, it was clear that our presentation did not reflect an apples-to-apples comparison in total sales tax dollars the city will receive. We were a bit confused with the different analyses being presented, so in order to edify the council and to make sure it's an apples-to-apples comparison, I have a slip sheet I'd like to hand you guys that has a comparable analysis. So a strong component that sets our project apart from the convenient proposals is the incremental sales tax revenue the city will receive with our project, due to the amount of increased volume that Ralph's gas sells over their competitors from the lower price point they provide, due to their bulk buy purchasing power. This location is estimated to sell north of $22 million in fuel per year, which based on the 1% sales tax the city receives, equates to $223,000 per year, which is the gas station sales alone. We project the C store component of the gas station will contribute another $25,000 per year in sales tax. The drive-through restaurant will contribute another $25,000 in sales tax. And in addition, as mentioned earlier, car washes do not typically pay a sales tax, but our tenant Fast Five has agreed to a customized contribution of 1% of their sales, which would equate to roughly $25,000 to $30,000 per year in sales tax revenue to the city. Lastly, once this project is developed, the new assessed value would be roughly $15 million, which would produce a property tax amount to the city of roughly $23,000 per year. When adding all of these used as sales tax items together, in total, this project would produce approximately $327,000 per year in sales tax to the city and over $24 million in total over the next 40 years. So although we may not be paying the highest price day one, our higher sale, higher sales tax dollars generated over the next 40 years yields a net present value that's higher today, to the city in today's dollars. So in summary, as you, as you all have seen, all three of these projects have basically the same development plan, but the difference in our project is that our gas station tenant is first-in-class in terms of the lower price fuel to all customers. Again, think Costco gas. The cross-shopping savings existing Ralph's customers have helped the overall health of the two nearby stores, and the higher volume of fuel that Ralph's gas sells over traditional gas stations that ultimately yields higher sales tax dollars to the city. Communities love the presence of these Ralph's gas stations, which is very rare, because the location needs to be adjacent to existing Ralph's grocery stores, which is very difficult to find in the tight Orange County real estate market. As mentioned earlier, adjacent to the gas station will be the C store end-cap drive-through, which will either be a quick service restaurant or Starbucks or Coffee Bean, that will provide amenities to the local community and neighboring Vista Hermosa Sports Park visitors. Our Fast Five Express Car Wash excels over traditional gas station car washes with competitive prices, speed, quality full-length tunnel washes, free vacuum stations, and is environmentally friendly. I've also confirmed that there will also be TVs at each vacuum station that will be playing surf videos on loop, which we know is important to the San Clemente locals. Our site plan also has better cross-access flow amongst the buildings, creating easier ingress and egress across the development, and our Ralph's gas station has 10 fuel stations as opposed to six, which allows for a higher volume of sales and less congestion and wait time, which is critical with their low-priced fuel. And lastly, we can move faster than the other proposals, since all our deals with our tenants are already finalized, and we can close escrow upon receipt of entitlement, which the city controls. Thank you both, and thank you all for your time and consideration, and we very much welcome the opportunity to bring this first-class development to successful completion.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah.
Please.
Good evening. My name is Matt Heslin, I'm a local resident, I live in San Juan Capistrano. I come by this site every day, I work out at the 24-Hour Fitness, and I'm a member of Shoreline Church in the community. So I come here quite often, I live in San Juan, but I actually live in San Clemente. So I'm here and I'm local, and if there's any questions I can answer, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Great. Any questions? Councilman Ward?
The only question I would have is, you made the statement that communities love the Ralph gas.
Yeah.
And I guess I need you to back that up, because that's not something that we're aware of.
Sure. Yeah, it's just, it's very rare to, as I mentioned, actually have a Ralph's gas station, because they, they need to be roughly within a mile of an existing store, so it's hard to find sites that fit that criteria. The reason the communities love them is they run a very clean operation, but most importantly, the savings on the fuel they provide because they're bulked by purchasing power. And with the, if you're a Ralph's preferred customer as well, you also get additional savings, which in some instances can be up to over like a dollar off per gallon. So if you go up to Orange off of Chapman, there's a Ralph's gas station there, and it's always very busy, and people wait in lines to access. It's a very small site with only four pumps, where this one would have actually 10, and they produce that much more volume than another gas station.
Okay. So who do you currently, which gas station provider do you currently have the, that program, the gas program with?
So that is with Kroger, which is the parent company of Ralph's. So they actually have their own, they are their own gas station as well.
So when I'm offered that at the Ralph's currently?
Yes.
Where would I have to go if this is?
The closest one? It would be in Orange.
Oh, so when they're offering me gas and I'm turning it down, it's because there is no station?
Exactly.
Okay.
So yeah.
So it's not Shell or anything?
No, well, they actually do have a partnership with Shell as well. So you can, you can go to Shell as a partner through Ralph's, but the, the main discount is through the actual Ralph's Kroger brand gas station, which I, as I mentioned, it's very rare to find one locally because of the, the tight, you know, real estate market, but the closest one here would be Orange. So being a Ralph's preferred customer with both those stores, you can get the added savings.
So is the savings greater at a Ralph's gas station than the Shell?
Yes.
How much?
I believe the head of real estate said roughly like 30 cents, 35 cents a gallon, yeah.
All right.
So where I'm not following you is, how does this, the presence of a Ralph's gas station build sales in your, in the Ralph's supermarket?
So basically with, so Kroger's the parent company, in a way, they've been able to achieve higher same-store sales. It's not necessarily by opening up more grocery stores, as the grocery industry has been challenged recently with, you know, online and physical footprints. So a way for them to increase same-store sales is by having these gas station components. So the way they're allowed to account those same-store sales is if the location is within, basically within a mile of a current Ralph's grocery store. Here, because they're two so close, this store would serve both, and the, the fuel sales would contribute to the overall health of those two stores, maintaining their long-term viability, ensuring that they stay open for the community, et cetera, because they can, they can count those fuel sales as actual same-store grocery sales for those two stores.
Just to bring some extra clarity to it, I used to be a grocer at Smart and Final, I was a, I was raised in the Smart and Final stores and ran the real estate and operations. And essentially, the, the same-store sales is very important to the retailer. As a public company, they have operating units and they can't report, you know, they have the store sales, and then they have what's called comp store sales, which is year-over-year sales increases. And so the year-over-year sales increase by having gas within a mile, they can count that as store sales for the existing store, which shows well for the store.
And the size of your convenience store, square footage? So the total building? I'll go back. See, let's see. So we have to get creative where the C store itself, they have flexibility in their size, but they can go as small as 800 feet, up to, you know, 1,500. In this case, we're going to do them at about 1,000 feet, and then the restaurant slash coffee tenant about 1,500. So that total building size will be about 2,500 feet, with the drive-through component, which is really maximizing the, the overall site layout of our development. You're welcome.
One last one.
Sure.
Who is your convenience store operator? Is it you or is it someone else?
So it's Kroger, it's Kroger corporate.
It is Kroger.
Yep, yep, so they usually have, because of the smaller size, they can have a one-man shop. Usually close to 10, but they're, will have, and they will ask if they can have 24-hour fuel service that's automated with, which is with a credit card, that failsafe switches in place, so it could actually, it could be pumping gas 24 hours if that's something the city would like to see as well.
So the employees will be Ralph's employees?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Questions? All right, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yep.
So that concludes the proposals for this evening, and staff stands ready and available for any questions.
So we'll invite up public comment, but just really quickly, has any of our planning staff had a chance to take any quick look at the proposed site plans in terms of consistency with code, or if there are any sort of major obstacles that they see?
The proposed site plans, they have not.
Okay. Didn't think so, but that I would ask. So, but.
In our meetings, though, with all three proposed developers, we've expressed to them the high standards that the city has, and the high expectations that the Planning Commission has, and the City Council, and the community. So they've all been made aware of, of the standards that we have and the expectations for, for development.
Okay, because the, doing this for a living, the immediate concern I have is, A, entitlement risk, and I don't want re-trading, and two, the timing, because none of these folks are going hard immediately. Nobody's giving us money and saying, we're buying this property. There's quite a bit of extensions and a pretty long lag time, so, you know, I appreciate that they're giving presentations, I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into a situation where we're going to have to re-trade again and again and again, so. Okay, all right, we'll go to public comment. Mr. Malamud, followed by Sarah Peterson, and then Esther, is it Bent?
Yeah. Dan, I share your concerns, and I think that, I sent all of you emails today, that I don't understand how we have a city manager's department with a city, a manager analyst, and there was no analysis by staff of these three picks. In fact, only the third bidder gave us a comparison analysis. I wouldn't buy a copier for my business without having comparison analysis of the three bids. So I don't know what we're doing here tonight. They all sound good, but we haven't compared price, taxes also. I want to make another comment on, everyone said we have this revenue coming in over the years, but remember, if a Tolega person, for example, buys gas here instead of the station, I think it's a mobile station over next to Lowe's, we're not incrementally increasing our gas. So the only incremental increase is the additional sales, and there's no proof that there will be any additional sales, just that they'll move to this gas station. So be careful how you spend this revenue. That's not a criticism of anybody that made a presentation today, it's just a fact that the city should have analyzed, in my view. In other words, we should have had a city analysis before the council of whether sale is better than a lease, and how much revenue we should expect, whether we should set aside any of that money for future projects, since we're giving up a very valuable piece of land here. I also share Kathy was the only one that asked. I also share Kathy was the only one that asked this question, so I give her credit. She wants to know this information. I think it should have been presented to council. Kathy shouldn't have had to be the one to raise it. Thankfully, she did raise it. So I think the point I'm trying to make here is, I think it's premature to select one of these three bids tonight. You simply need staff, or, I mean, you guys paid to get an RFP for the hospital, but there's no RFP here. We're relying on a commercial real estate broker who gets commission either way, they don't care. They didn't make a recommendation of one of these three. They just said, "We have three bids." So I share Dan's view that we need to know, are these really going to go forward? A $7 million bid is the best bid, may not be the best if they're never going to move forward with it. So I think there's just too much missing here. I don't think the process should ever be done this way. I just think this is a huge mistake. I think council's got to tell staff, if you're going to bring these things to us, bring it with a comparison analysis. Let us know how fast people are going to move forward. Let us know who the contracts are with. I just can't believe anybody would think that the dog and pony show we saw tonight, even though there were three great dog and pony shows, gave you sufficient information to make a decision over a $100,000 project, let alone a $7 million project. I think you should defer this for at least two weeks or three weeks, with the staff giving you the analysis you need, a comparison analysis on a spreadsheet of why we should pick one over the other, the, why the economics are different from these, what the different type of gas stations are, if you're going to be guaranteed a coffee shop or not. I mean, optional doesn't mean very much. So I appreciate your difficulty with this decision, but I say defer until you have all the information in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next is Sarah Peterson, followed by Esther Bent, and then, is it Mike Sater?
Hi. My name's Sarah. I don't have much voice, so I'm going to give it all I got for three minutes. I'm a resident and homeowner here. I'm also a local business owner. I own Zebra House Coffee. Zebra House has been a local favorite in San Clemente since it opened in 2011. And we, we served more than 120,000 locals last year, and we donated about...
Sorry, Ms. Peterson, if you could...
This way.
Please.
Okay, sorry. I don't know who I'm supposed to talk to. Yep. So we served more than 120,000 locals last year and donated about 3% of our revenue to local foundations and charities, and kids, and other things here in San Clemente. We are a local San Clemente business. We recently announced that we're expanding at our current location, and we're really excited about it. It's going to double the size of our operation. We've been even more excited about something that we haven't announced, and this isn't really exactly how we intended to have that conversation with the city. On November 30th, we signed into a very long-term lease to operate a 2,750-square-foot drive-through coffee shop and cafe, pretty much directly across the street from the proposed property that we're all discussing here today. I'm here today to express a big concern, not just for myself, obviously, as a local business owner, but just for the city of San Clemente. It feels like it's getting more and more big-box and commercial every month, and I'm concerned about another big-box operation going in directly across the street, whether that's the highest and best use of the real estate, and certainly the impact that it will have on local businesses, obviously particularly mine. But I also don't know if it's the best use of space to have a competing concept directly across the street. It feels like there's a lot better things that we can do with our space. So I'd like to ask that you consider the total package of what you're looking at, and I don't know if it's, the right answer is actually within any of the three proposals that you guys are considering. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Esther, followed by Mike Sater?
Hi, everyone. My name is Esther, and I am the current manager of Zebra House, and I stand here today to support both Sarah, as well as the business that I grew up in. To tell you a little bit about my background, I started at Zebra House when I was 16, and I've remained an employee there throughout my years in college, throughout my years teaching English, and now today, as I am currently managing our location now, and our future location across the street from the proposed business park development. Again, I just am standing here to support and kind of give a voice to the local businesses that have grown here in San Clemente with the proposed development of this new business park location. I think, you know, this is still a very new development process, and there's still a lot of proposals being made, and with our announcement of our new location across the street, as well as local businesses that I think would really love an opportunity to be a part of this partnership with the new development, I would just implore the city to really keep in mind the local businesses that you all have really supported these years as I've been alive, as long as I've been alive here in San Clemente. I've known the city to really want to take a huge part in supporting local business, and in the future of San Clemente and the big money that comes in, I know that sometimes we forget about the small businesses that are fighting next door. So I just am asking you to think about us, think about Zebra House Coffee across the street, think about other opportunities that could be for small businesses, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Esther. Appreciate it. Mike Sater, and then Bree Hughes, and then Ryan Bork.
Is it, is it okay to talk? I'm one of the three developer, or not?
Three minutes.
I do. All right, great. Since I didn't have a chance to talk much about my company, so I would like to do so. We're a California-based company. We've been in this business for 40 years. I don't look it, but it is 40 years. We base in San Dimas, and we have offices throughout the state and in Washington State. We've been doing it so good, recently, the last couple of years, we've been asked by Arco to manage their own site, their own corporate site, because they don't run it very well. So we're the only one authorized to run corporate location for Bridge Petroleum, Arco, and Marathon in the West Coast. And why we, why should we be selected here? We employ more than anybody, we do volume more than anybody, and those are fact. Everybody loves Arco and the West Coast. And we create more income to the city and taxes. And we have best of the, in the market, technology for the car wash. We all, we all reuse the water to save money. We have recycling systems, those are common now, everybody uses them, there's nothing special about that. And we, we run safe, in beautiful place, we run about over 50 cameras throughout the sites, and our AMPM sell more than any other C-stores in the market. So we generate a lot of income. I wish you select us, and I greatly appreciate it.
Good. Thank you, Mike. Bree Hughes, followed by Ryan Bork.
Thank you, Mayor Bain, City Council, and staff members. My name is Bree Hughes. I'm a longtime resident of San Clemente. I live here with my husband, my two children. My parents also own a home eight doors down from us, and my 99-year-old grandmother lives in our neighboring city of San Juan Capistrano. We are four generations deep of locals that live here and own businesses here in San Clemente. I'm a local business owner, I'm an active member of this community, and my husband has also lived here as a longtime resident and worked for SoCal Edison for over 20 years. I'm here today to address the council and make my comments public regarding this site. For those of you that aren't aware, I submitted an offer to purchase this same property, and in fact, started the dialogue with the city in 2012, over seven years ago, when Paul Gunderson was the city manager. At the time of submitting our proposal, we were assured that as locals, we would be taken into consideration, and that all factors of every proposal would be scrutinized. I am, in fact, the only local operator who submitted an offer on this property. We are the only end-users who submitted an offer on this property. This is an extremely important for both council and the public to understand the ramifications and the nuances of this fact. As local end-users, we can ensure operational standards that no other bidder in this room can ensure. Since the other bidders are not direct end-users, there is also an inherent cost of doing business that will ultimately be passed on to the consumers and the people of San Clemente. As local end-users, who would not be going to market to solicit other tenants, we are the only potential purchaser who, with the city's cooperation, can guarantee a firm timeline of doors open, providing much-needed services to the city. We are the only users, well, as of this afternoon, and based on our conversation with our representatives at Arco, that have a firm commitment from Arco AMPM. In fact, we received our conditional commitment from our partners at Arco five years ago, and they've been actively involved in our due diligence and the submission of our proposal. By Arco's objective criteria, we have consistently been one of the highest-rated operators in the system for over 25 years at our nine locations. With the other three proposals being real estate developers intending to ground lease and bring in other tenants, there is no certainty who the ultimate operators will be. So what am I asking for here today? I'm asking for you to consider the, to reconsider the proposals you have in hand, and to reopen the submission and selection process to include our proposal. I'm asking for you to truly understand the potential risks and ramifications of selling our city land to an out-of-area developer with no ties to San Clemente. I'm asking that a final decision not be made until my family has had the same opportunity to present our full proposal.
Thank you, Bree. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is Ryan Bork, followed by Kevin Riley.
I think that Brad saves me some time when he's up here, because I do agree with him as far as doing a comprehensive analysis. I'd actually like to change gears on that. I'm not necessarily in line or in agreement with how it was determined what the best use of that property is, because I don't necessarily think that maximizing dollars is the highest and best use of that property. I think we want something that really adds to the city and benefits to the city. So as much as there could be arguments about increased traffic on La Pata, you know, depending on a lot of things that can happen, over the next few years, adding gas stations is usually not on the top of any city's list. When you look at fuel requirement standards, people are getting better gas mileage, buying more hybrids, we've got a big move towards electric vehicles, so I'd hate to see the blight of yet another gas station, which I'm an interested party, happen to stare at the ocean off my balcony, and directly in my way will be a bright gas station with an express car wash. I guess that's a personal problem. I love the idea of a quote-unquote "car wash," but we do have multiple car washes in town. I've done some research on all of the providers and looked at reviews and, you know, kind of went in-depth, and a lot of these express car washes aren't that great. They don't replace a hand car wash. Obviously, a hand car wash is more labor-intensive, but you don't go to one of these express washes and get a detail on your car or something like that. I think one thing that people miss is those folks of us that live on the inland side of town call it a rich-person problem, but with homes that are well over a million, $1,500, $2 million homes, we actually have high-line cars that are quite expensive. So we're not necessarily interested in $10 a month in unlimited car washes, where we just have a handful of people that bog down these buildings with car washes and set the vacuums all day. I don't think that it's the best use, ignoring dollars, that we really aren't creating that many jobs. I mean, an automated car wash with maybe one or two operators, one or two gas station employees, you know, maybe one or two full-time equivalent people working at yet another coffee house. I mean, we've got Starbucks inside of Target, we've got Coffee Bean inside of Ralph's, we've got Pete's, we've got another Starbucks just one intersection down, we've got a brand-new drive-in Starbucks in town, and adding another sandwich shop or something similar. I, I think we can do a lot better with that intersection. I think it's a beautiful firehouse there. We've got the, you know, we've got the park behind it. I mean, whether that's used for, you know, a senior care-type facility, or something I think would be more of a value-add, but I don't know how we get to the highest and best use of, hey, in the age of transforming the way we, transforming the way that we travel, that, hey, let's just go ahead and add another gas station. I just, I don't think that's anywhere near the best use, and then obviously, an express car wash, that I think the people are missing the mark, because a lot of people in Topeka and Rancho San Clemente aren't going to want to put their nice cars through a self-serve car wash.
Thank you, Ryan. Kevin Riley?
Kevin Riley, resident of San Clemente. I was enjoying my habit salad, watching this on TV, and I had to run down here real quick to say my piece. Currently, I'm the Director of Development for Staples, the office superstore. I represent the western United States. Prior to that, I was with Marriott Hotels as Vice President Officer of Development, and prior to that, I was Vice President of Mobile Oil, Real Estate Development. I just have to say my two pence here, that earlier in the presentation, they talked about the revenue being new to the city, and the taxes, and all the other neat stuff. It's just going to be a transfer. Up there, you're currently using a station at X, this is Y, it's just going to be purely a transfer of gasoline sales, taken away from our current operators in the town. In terms of the revenue, and the gentleman before me talking about labor, again, self-serve operation, there's not going to be jobs created out of this, there's going to be minimal, minimal, minimal. Is this where we want our city to go to? We have the outlets as it is, that changed the whole operation of it. When I was with Marriott Hotels, I secured the property next door to the outlets for a Marriott hotel, going through the Coastal Commission, and that was what, 15, 20 years ago I was working on that? So that's how long that project finally took, and, you know, you see where it's at now. I just wanted to say, I don't think it's the highest and best use for the property. I think the presentation was kind of misinformative of what revenue it's going to create to the city, and then also the location of it, is this really where we want? So just my two cents.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Any other comment cards on this?
No.
Okay. Oh, we have one more. On its way up.
Hello.
Okay, come on. I was going to invite your folks up for a little bit longer, so...
You were?
I was.
What would you like? Well, any specific you want to add?
No, I said, everybody else got a little extra time, so...
Yeah, we were told five minutes, and so we hurried.
I didn't know, and you guys...
We felt a little rush.
So I was going to reward you with some extra time.
Um, in thinking about a comment you had made, which is a commitment to getting it done, we'd like to let the city know we're very comfortable, believe in our project and what we're doing, and when we open escrow, we will go hard with $300,000.
Councilor Ward?
Since you're up here, did you say who your mini-mart provider was?
Yeah.
Who was that?
Platinum Energy.
Okay. Can you describe?
Sure.
We're interested in, I am interested in what the mini-mart is and what it provides. So Platinum, I'm not familiar with.
Good evening. We are a current operator of the 76 in Bela Marketplace on Camino de los Morros on Highway 5.
Over there by Sprouts, on the corner?
By, by the supermarket. They stay the brothers. So, we've been, we've been there for a few years, and we have another 130 locations similar to that.
Okay. So I think I didn't get that. I was listening for a name that I recognized, and since I didn't hear it, I was wondering who that was. Do you have any comment on the Bliss car wash? What is the length of it?
We are proposing 150 feet.
So it's similar to the others that we heard?
Fast Five that is proposing, right. But we have, the technology of the water-saving technology is unique to Bliss.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? First, great, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Well, the recommendation before you this evening is just that staff stands ready to receive direction from the City Council on the development of the city-owned parcel located at Avenida Vista Hermosa and Avenida La Pata.
Okay. Any comments, Nadia, on a direction? Councilmember Ferguson?
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson?
Thank you. Thanks. I, I'd love to see a comparative analysis of sales tax, property tax, right?
Thank you.
Mayor Proton Ferguson?
Thank you. Thanks. I'd love to see a comparative analysis of sales tax, property tax, right, purchase price, and lease revenue with all of the proposals in a table format so we could really compare because a price to purchase isn't everything. It's really important that, and as important, to see the ongoing revenue every year. And I'm trying to add up in here the various proposals between our property tax and sales tax, but it'd be nice to see just a snapshot of what that looks like so that everyone can really see the value that we're getting, right, from these proposals. And secondly, on the dais tonight is a letter, and it's addressed to you and to City Manager Max Chenoff. And it's very concerning, and Ms. Hughes echoed some part of this sentiment about the process perhaps being not entirely fair. This particular proposal I'm addressing is a letter from NNN San Clemente LLC, and they secured entitlements from the city to develop some buildings in the Target parking lot. And I'd love to have a response for the City Manager, look into this because this person indicates that they were confused or perplexed by the inclusion of car wash use, given in the three proposals we have in the agenda report tonight. Because, let's see, because Planning Commission informed NNN San Clemente prior to the bid date that the car wash use is most likely incompatible with the relevant zoning land use designation, and thus would most likely not be supported by staff. I can't remember now, James, because we did have 15 proposals. Did they exclude the car wash for that reason in their proposal?
I can't remember if they did because of that reason, and I haven't had that, we haven't had a conversation with the Planning Commission, and planning staff hasn't indicated a problem with the car wash at that location.
I think it owes a look into this, especially considering we had another person who will be a tenant of NNN San Clemente Zebra Coffee House, who expressed grave concerns tonight as well, having just signed a lease on a coffee shop and restaurant there, quite a substantial one, too, at 2,700 square feet, I believe. Could we get some more information on that?
We'll dive into the letter. We received it at 5:30 tonight, and we'll dive into it with staff tomorrow and with CB Arnie.
I think it'd be really helpful to make an informed decision. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Mayor Proton, any other comments, questions? Councilmember Ward.
I remember when we talked about this earlier, I think we had correspondence from Ms. Hughes and a proposal, but we had correspondence before we decided on these last three. So I think we did take into consideration what she was offering. I think we should maybe, and I want to see if we all have the same amount of what we would receive per year. I was trying to keep track of that and go through the report. Definitely, we have different amounts in what they're willing to spend, 7 million versus 6, I believe, for the second two. For Fountainhead, I have 290,000, and for Property 9, I heard 250 to 320, which is a big spread. And then Hezbollah Holdings said 327,000 approximately, and it had a lot to do with the markets. That's very difficult for us to gauge, I think. I mean, we really have to, would really have to have a big discussion on that tonight, whether that is valid or not. I've expressed before concern, I thought that area would want top-shelf gas over a cheaper gas, just because of the cars that I thought would be going through it. I thought that was a better use. I'm not sure, you know, I'm willing to entertain what the rest of the council thinks on that. You know, it's difficult that we didn't know about Zebra Coffee. This is the city's property, and we've been trying to, that's why we went out to bid on this, to find out what was the market would bear. And what we got was a car wash, and we actually talked to Talega Development last year, and they told us that they wanted a car wash. I am sensitive to hearing that, you know, it's just going to be a transfer from one station to another. However, we lose a lot of revenue from people going to Costco. And I think if we could make it better in that area where there is some gas stations, and we know we get a great deal of revenue from there, I'm hoping that we would get a transfer from people going here instead of Costco, just because of the convenience. I mean, I know people that drive straight from here to Costco to get their gas. When they do that, someone Capistrano gets the revenue and San Clemente doesn't. So we need to stop that from going over there. So I'm okay with the use, but I'd like to see it be the highest quality that we can. That's why I was asking who the food mart was, who the vendors were, because I think to me that shows a lot of what we think of that corner. So I'm, you know, I'm more interested in that. And definitely, you know, I've always been against selling property, but I do understand that this would be difficult for staff to be, to work on, for the city to be a tenant. So I am willing to look at that. And the revenue is so high per year that I think in this one instance, it is good to sell the property to get this revenue. We need it. But one person said in the audience, be really careful. I can't remember if it was Brad, if I should give him credit for that. But it's one thing that I want, and I know we've been talking about, whatever we get, whatever money we decide to sell this for, we really have to be careful in how we spend it. It just can't go away. It's got to stay to really shore up, you know, what we want for our city. So that's just my two cents. You know, I'm willing to look at each one. I don't, we've already looked at these, and we asked them to come back to, you know, for the public to see. So I'm okay with us trying to duke it out and look at the comparisons. If we're wrong on the amount of money, you know, we can definitely go through staff and any of the applicants on that, but I can make a decision tonight if you're willing to go through it.
Any other comments before I jump in? Nope. So just to try to address, one of the reasons tonight we had this was because we wanted the public to get a chance to see what the proposals were and to not sort of rush forward. And I appreciate all of the bidders tonight because they found out, I think a week ago, maybe less, that they were going to be doing this presentation in public. We tried to be as fair as we could in the process, and the way we did it was by listing it with an agent, which is what any private property owner would generally do, and see what came in in terms of proposals and highest and best use. What we didn't do was limit what the uses were. And some of the questions or comments I heard about highest and best use, generally, that's a numerical moniker of what is the most you can make for a property. And without question, all of the ones in, say, the top 10 were all gas station and car wash uses of some sort because that is pretty much what that site screams, is a car wash, gas station, and some sort of a convenience use. So that's what we looked at, and I can kind of give a flavor to the public. It was a pretty precipitous drop from the highest grouping of $5 to $7 million, and then you looked at, like, senior living and other types of uses were like $4, $3 million or less for that site. And so part of what I would think the public expects from us is, if we're going to sell public property for a use, what are we getting out of it monetarily? Because I hear repeatedly, what is our budget doing? How are we going to pay for more deputies, et cetera? And that's, that was a huge factor for us in looking at this. So I understand the concerns about the uses, and gas stations are by no means a sexy use. I acknowledge that 1,000 percent. But I lived back in Talega, and I can tell you, I heard repeatedly that we need more gas stations. And I heard it repeatedly, and I think the city even did a study assessing what the highest and best use for that property was, and it was a gas station. With that being said, I didn't really intend to make a final decision tonight. What I wanted was the community to get a sense of what the proposals were, and I think the applicants and bidders for all rearranging their schedules to be here. What I would like to see is a comparison for the community, but more importantly for me is an 80,000-foot assessment of site plans and use, so I can get a better sense of how much re-trading is going to happen, if any, for what's being proposed. I'm not as concerned about sort of the DRB that's going to go through design review, but I really want to know, are we getting a fair assessment of what can be used on that site? And I would expect, myself being in a position at that point, to the extent we can get the information, being ready to make a decision probably after the first of the year. I don't think we can fit it in next week. I don't think that's fair to anyone to do that. The other thing I'd be interested in knowing from the bidders is how much, or what willingness is there to consider local business concepts? Certainly, I'm not going to require that, but to the extent they consider that, and I can go into their pro forma, I'd be interested to know that. So that's where I am tonight, and to be clear, I didn't really come into this expecting to make an unequivocal decision, and I expected there would be questions and comments raised. So that's where I am. And again, I hope the public will understand, the reason we did this process was to give you more information as opposed to less, so the questions were good ones, but without any, I will move to, I guess it wouldn't be tailing, to continue it to the first meeting in January.
Second.
Second, well, is there going to be a?
First meeting's canceled.
Okay, so the second meeting in January, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So that passes for. And again, I just wanted to, sorry, to reiterate to our bidders, I really appreciate the time you took. I think we can be, give fair consideration with a little bit more information, so thank you. Can we take a five-minute break, since we're going to be clearing out anyway? Is that okay with everyone? Good. Good.
[music]
The next item is report from the city manager and city attorney concerning an urgency ordinance relating to closure of the Pico transitional camp, restoration of the citywide camping ban, and provision of alternate interim shelter.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, the city manager asked me to prepare a brief summary of our written report, if that's all right. We wanted to note tonight that the 2018 closure of several large encampments in North Orange County displaced literally hundreds of persons suffering from the effects of homelessness. At the time, and concurrently with that, San Clemente witnessed a significant increase in the number of individuals illegally camping in the city. Public camping and camping in trespass on private lands was absolutely banned under the municipal code. To complicate all this, the Ninth Circuit decided a case, Martin v. Boise, it was referred to and well summarized earlier, that significantly restricts the city's ability to address public camping and the nuisance factors associated with public camping, unless the city makes alternative provisions and arrangements for camping or sheltering people nearby. So the perfect storm of the release and closure of the North County encampments and this decision by the Ninth Circuit led to an immediate humanitarian, public safety, and environmental crisis in San Clemente. Much of that was documented and witnessed and testified to in these chambers. The city council then acted quickly to respond to this crisis by adopting a series of enactments, including one to put in abeyance the city's citation authority against persons found camping on a portion of the city's public works yard on Avenue de Pico. The city did this with the understanding and the hope that state environmental and coastal laws did not require us to stand by and watch that public health and safety situation deteriorate further. In fact, our argument and our position has been that the state environmental and coastal statutes contemplated emergencies like that and gave the city ability to act accordingly. Since those enactments took place in June, the city, county, the sheriff, and nonprofit and charitable partners have been working ambitiously to provide intervention and control to the city's homeless situation. The causes and effects of homelessness are generally considered intractable, that's noted in the written report tonight, but San Clemente's efforts since summer and the passage of these enactments have significantly reduced the number of campers in the city, people camping illegally, to a number that you can literally count on one hand. The city council and the city have done this with broad strokes of funding and enactments that have taken place in here, but also on one-on-one, one-by-one intervention and assistance to persons who find themselves homeless in our city. This has happened and has been successful to the point that the current strategies as enacted in June are no longer necessary or cost-effective. And the city council last week received a report that the temporary opportunity to camp at the city public works yard is no longer necessary, and in fact, on a much more cost-effective basis with vouchers and with an eye toward perhaps looking at an alternative location for an encampment. The ordinances that were passed on the emergency basis in June, or I'm sorry, earlier this year, can be repealed. So what is before you is an urgency ordinance that does just that. It's an urgency ordinance that repeals the ordinances passed last year. Sorry, I'm looking at the report on the real estate, no wonder. An ordinance that amends and repeals ordinances number 1673, 74, and 75. This enactment is done with the understanding and with the finding that those, the new ordinance is exempt from CEQA. By taking those five or six individuals who are now camping at the Pico site and putting them in places that are designed for human habitation, this ordinance and the findings attached to it actually find that that effort will have a positive effect on the environment, I think for obvious reasons. And so that comes with the action before you. There was one other provision in the ordinance that the council asked to bring back, and that is a passage that says, if and when for any reason Martin v. Boise dictates that people have to camp on public lands in the city, that can only be done during nighttime hours, after 5:00 and before 10:00 o'clock in the morning. That's in order to avoid the impacts that that camping would have on the city, but still to allow people to exercise that right if there's no other shelter available. I should mention that there was a letter filed tonight by the plaintiffs in the case I mentioned earlier, and I think I've addressed the points of letter, at least as it relates to the environmental review. The plaintiffs asked whether the city also intended to repeal ordinance number 1676, and the answer to that is no, that's repealed by implication. Ordinance number 1676 sunsetted the urgency ordinance at the end of June 2020, but by passing this repeal of all those provisions, it moots ordinance number 1676, and there's no need to repeal it, but I want to note that for the record. So that's the report before you. I should mention that this is an urgency ordinance. It requires that the council adopt the urgency findings that are included in the staff report and the recital. It has to pass by at least a four-fifths majority, which tonight ends four out of four. Parallel provisions of this ordinance will be brought to you next Tuesday night in a regular ordinance that will pass through the traditional first and second reading and 30 dates to effective date, so it will be on the books permanently through normal notice and processes that will give people the opportunity to comment and respond next week in addition to tonight.
Any questions before we go to public comment? Okay. First up is going to be Rick Lefler, followed by Ray Harju, and then Jenny Yun.
Hello, counsel. I really have to applaud you for the work you've done. We go back seven months ago to where we were and how it's progressed, up and down, and hills and valleys, and, you know, it looks like we're coming to at least a temporary management solution on this, and I think it's really good. I don't want, any chance, just want to make a comment on that 8.86.40, where if we can't put somebody someplace, they can put up their tent at 5:00 in the afternoon until 10:00 in the morning? I mean, man, that's a lot of sleeping in.
I might have that backwards, Mr. Lefler.
Oh, okay. I think that's, I think I read that, though. I think that's what it said in the agenda. I think it said, so, yeah, 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. would make a whole lot more sense, otherwise it's just kind of a sleep-in barbecue kind of thing. So while you're looking for that, I'll just keep on going.
That's what the rule is now.
But I think it said in the agenda, I think it did say 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m., and if that's wrong, maybe we could change that before.
It's whatever the rule is now at Pico.
Okay, I don't know.
Is that right?
Yeah. It's 5:00 p.m.?
5:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m.
Okay, that sounds much better. I feel a lot, a lot, no, wait, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m., yeah, that's, that's a, boy, oh, boy! Well, what a, I guess if you don't have a job or anything to do, I guess that's great hours. Okay, well, anyway, now, stepping forward, I know we have some things in place. I saw them putting up warning signs, or my wife told me they're putting up signs at the train station in anticipation of the, of the no ticket, no stand-around, public safety ban. I've heard a rumor that OCSD is not going to enforce that, they've said they're not going to enforce it. I emailed, actually, I emailed Councilwoman Ferguson and Councilwoman Ward and met, talked to Mayor Bain and Councilmember James, and I was requested that maybe OCSD could provide a representative to maybe explain why they're not going to enforce our municipal codes. It seems like, at any point now, it seems like we should have a book of the things they will enforce and not the things that they won't, you know, because that stack is a lot smaller on the ones they will. Again, I don't blame Lieutenant Manhart or the deputies, I know it's not his policy, but I guess we're going to send our enforcement people, I mean, our code enforcement people out in polo shirts to do the enforcement, and then OCSD will stand by in case there's a problem. I just, I don't understand, I would still like to hear somebody from the OCSD explain why they're not going to enforce our codes. Also, I looked on the city side, I could not find a copy of our contract that we have with OCSD. I'd like, if possible, if it's not on there, if we could make that available so we could review it. I'd really like to know the contract we signed in to, and to see if they're keeping up with it or if they're remiss. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next is Ray Harju, followed by Jenny Yun, and then Amy.
Hi, my name is Ray Harju, and I want to thank you for all the stuff that you guys have been doing to help the homeless problem in North Beach. We've got a ways to go. We live right at the end of Pico, and all of us there in North Beach suffer from the problem. I'm not here to tell you how to solve the problem, because I don't know, but I feel really good about having a couple lawyers on the city council. Just a couple of examples. One day, my wife pulls into the garage in her car, had a couple of grand dogs in the car, gets out of the car and sees this big, tall guy charging up the driveway. She catches his eyes, she says, "You're looking at me, you're looking at me, why are you looking at me?" One of the dogs, the greatest grand dog in the world, goes after this guy, backs him into the street. He goes, continues to go down towards the ocean, followed by about four cops. It took about six cops to get this guy down on the ground. Somebody had called the cops earlier on this guy, but that's the kind of stuff we face in North Beach. We had a situation where Saturday afternoon, bang, 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 bang on the door, the guy says, "I'm going to kick this blank, blank, blank door in." And so we open it up, we try to talk to him, we, he finally gives up on whatever his problem was, goes down the stairs, goes charging up and down the street. He was probably there for half an hour going around, called the cops, cops never came. You know, just kind of a scary situation. We had a situation where my neighbor opens up the door, and here's like three homeless guys sleeping on the porch. You know, I had to run those guys off. Last weekend, I went down to surf, I'm talking to one of my surf buddies, and he says, "We just had a situation here where one of the homeless guys was giving crap to one of the, one of the churchgoers, they have a church down there every Sunday." And so he got into it with her, and my buddy said, "We thought this guy was going to get physical with her." Well, apparently, he never did, but that's the kind of problem we're all facing down there. Recently, I reported two or three tents on the beach that stayed there for, you know, two, three, four weeks. I think I emailed most of you guys about that. And I did report the other day that their tents are gone, so I want to thank you for that. Problem is, is now there's two encampments on the parking lot in North Beach. There's crap all over the place, and this is right at the end of the coastal trail where people are coming in and out. So I appreciate addressing that. So in general, thanks a lot, you know, we appreciate the work that you guys do. We know it's a very difficult job, but, you know, to a large extent, it can be dangerous down there, these guys, so appreciate all the help you can give us.
Thank you, Ray. Next is Jenny Yun, followed by Amy, and then Eric Ward.
I echo some of the previous speakers in thanking you for all of your hard work on the homeless issue. I would just say that I support the closing of the homeless camp on Pico. While it has been open, it has been a danger to our community and to our children from some of the campers being mentally ill or addicted to drugs. This is evidenced by the increase in calls to the police to North Beach, which the San Clemente Times reported on. I appreciate your vote to close the camp. In the future, should you ever need to open another camp, I strongly urge you to do so in the designated SB2 zone away from ocean views and liquor stores. Thank you.
Ms. Yun, next is Amy, followed by Eric Ward.
Thank you very much. I am here on, my name's Amy Spencer, I'm here on behalf of the Elder Law and Disability Rights Center and our client, the Emergency Shelter Coalition. We delivered a letter to the city earlier today, and I have copies of letters for all of you, but I think that you already received them as well. So I would like to read the letter that we wrote and into the record. Emergency Shelter Coalition welcomes the city of San Clemente's decision to repeal ordinances 1673, 1674, 1675, and discontinue operation of the lot at 380 Avenue de Pico. The ordinances and camp are illegal, and restricting homeless persons to sleeping in a single lot inflicts serious harm on them. in a single lot inflicts serious harm on them. ESC hopes that it will be able to work productively with the city towards the establishment of a safe and appropriate shelter for persons experiencing homelessness. When the city enacted ordinances 1673 and 1674, it improperly claimed exemption under the California Environmental Equality Act, failed to apply for a permit from the Coastal Commission as required by the Coastal Act, and violated its own land use restrictions. Given the city's failure to proceed in the manner required by law, ESC filed a mandamus action to compel the city to rescind and invalidate these ordinances, and that lawsuit is now set for hearing before Judge Sherman in the Orange County Superior Court. ESC notes that the city did not include ordinance 1676 in today's proposed repeal. Should the city fail to repeal ordinance 1676, ESC can only presume the decision not to repeal it is intentional. Notably, with respect to ASC's claim that the city violated the Coastal Act, the Coastal Commission confirmed at its public meeting on September 11th, 2019, that the city was required to obtain a permit before establishing the camp on Pico Boulevard. Furthermore, on October 15th, 2019, the Coastal Commission issued a letter, a copy of which is enclosed here with, confirming that a permit was required for the camp, and the city needed to submit a permit application within 60 days because it was operating in unpermitted development. After passing the ordinances, the city moved homeless individuals from around the city into a lot at Avenida Pico. The numbers in the lot are believed to exceeded 80 people at times, but the number of people using the lot now has decreased due to unsafe conditions and new restrictions introduced by the city. The city restricted the lot to residents, but did not provide any clear guidance or way that a homeless person could prove their residency. It later prohibited use of tents during the day, leaving residents with no shade from sun or protection from the rain. Infestation of bugs and rodents has increased. The few remaining residents must endure these conditions and other indignities. Now that the city intends to repeal ordinances and close the camp, the city has an opportunity to turn its attention to real solutions. ESC hopes that it can work with the city on such solutions moving forward."
Thank you, Amy. Next is Eric Ward. Do you like these? Are those just letters, the letters? Does everybody have a copy of the letter?
The dais?
Yes, thank you. Eric Ward.
Okay, first, thank you for closing the camp, but the alternatives to the camp, I wanted to make some comments about those. The first one was to give out these hotel vouchers. It seems like that's going to be a big attraction to more people coming here, just like the camp was initially. We went from like 10 to 80, and if we start giving out vouchers, it seems like that will attract a lot more people coming to our city to want to stay in a hotel versus camping And then also, there was no limitation about how long they could use this voucher for. You know, when they originally closed the riverbed, they gave the 30-day voucher, but this one, I don't know, is it endless or is there a limit? And then, are we going to use the same San Clemente residency requirements to give out these hotel vouchers, or can anybody get them? And then also, you're going to limit the amount of money per month to $10,000. So, again, what happens to the next person that comes when the $10,000 is used? Send them outside or what? I just think now we're spending $30,000 a month, this seems like it might be difficult to bridge between 10 to 30. I mean, I certainly don't want to spend any more money than we have to, but just $10,000 seemed pretty arbitrary. And then you talked about having a, establishing a long-term transitional campground. Since right now, we have a campground that we can only attract, you know, four or five people, what will be the success if we establish another campground? Why would more people come to a new campground versus the campground that we have now? Also, you mentioned that you wanted to use public campgrounds. I guess public campgrounds were going to be the state parks. I don't know for sure, but that was what I assumed. And I really disagree with allowing a bunch of homeless people to take over our state parks. You know, these are very precious to us, and we have a lot of people coming to stay in a nice state park, and you saw what happened to the campground, how terrible it became, and even Dale described it as a prison environment, you know, and we hate to establish a prison environment in one of our state parks. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any other common cards? Any discussion, questions at the dais?
I do.
Mayor Protim Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor Bane. I just want to say I'm very positive to see so many people get the assistance they need with the help of many, including staff here, the city, the county, sheriff deputies, Mercy House, FAM, all the social service network providers and churches. It's been positive. We've had some very positive success stories from this. If we had to do it over again, I would do it again. I mean, we thought we could limit to local folks who are experiencing homelessness, and, well, it grew, it grew, the situation grew, but we had an immediate, urgent situation to address that was harming the health and safety of the homeless who were at North Beach, and also the public as well. And so, it was a good remedy, and we've learned a lot from it, and it's time to close it. So, with all good actions, you know, they run their course, and now it's time to come up with Plan B to address the homelessness in our town. But I do want to note also in the agenda report, it's a little bit confusing, because the county, in the report, it says the county closed shelter beds. They actually haven't. I was up at Courtyard Shelter about three weeks ago. It is open. They do plan to close it and open a new shelter on Yale Drive in Santa Ana, so that's in the works, but I just want to note that. So, they didn't create our problem, and having so many issues for our community to deal with, they've been a great collaboration with us in helping us provide resources to everyone. So, that's important to note. And I guess this question is for, well, before I go on, I wanted to also note that Family Assistance Ministries has sent 31 people experiencing homelessness in San Clemente Home just in 2019, so that's a positive reflection. And then Mercy House, to the city manager, do we plan, James, to have Mercy House come and provide an update on their success?
The council direction was to post their data on the website and not to bring them back.
Okay, I know I had sent an email, I think I copied Mayor Bane, to invite them to come. Do you think you could do that? I know you did for the last meeting, they weren't available. Could they perhaps come to the next meeting?
If that's the council direction as a majority, yes, but the council direction in October was not to bring them back again.
Oh, okay. I didn't recall that, but could, would the council like to support that? Just now that the camp is, we're going to be voting tonight to repeal those ordinances and close this campsite, perhaps a recap? Because I don't think a lot of people just think to go to the website, but they do watch our meetings, I'm aware of that.
I mean, I would support that if we could get them back, so.
Just a recap?
If that's appropriate, since it's not on the agenda, but I'm happy to hear from them always, so, monthly if we could.
You can discuss whether to put that on a future agenda, that's not a problem.
Okay, I'd like to do that if we can, if I can get two other votes for that. And then, perhaps an update at the next meeting on a future agenda. On the park rangers, we expanded their role in the parks and monitoring the parks and also helping address some of the homeless situations that we have. So, perhaps if you can provide us with an update on their training, and I know we also gave them arrest authority, do we have, so if we have some information on their training, because I know they do need to get additional training to be able to do those things that we authorized them to do, and perhaps in that report, we can talk about, you know, what impact that has had if they have all been trained. I'm just not aware, and that's been a few months now. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. We haven't, we, the park rangers don't have arrest authority, do they?
They have citation.
Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to note, it was called arrest authority. They can call the police and take a license for identification was basically the limits of that arrest authority.
Okay, anybody have a motion?
No, I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt urgency ordinance number 1682 entitled an urgency ordinance of the city council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending chapter 8.86 of the city, of the San Clemente Municipal Code related to public camping in its entirety, repealing ordinances number 1673, 1674, and 1675, and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act. Number two, approve of supplemental appropriation of, for fiscal year 2019, '20, in the amount of $70,000 to account number 03880943890, Low Moderate Income Housing Fund, Other Contractual Services.
Second.
So, a motion by Councilmember Ward, second by Councilmember James, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. Daryl McFann?
Mayor Dan Bane, council members, and Ms. Laura Ferguson, ProTim Mayor. If I speak, it seems like you already have a solution already planned and in the works, and I've said this before, but I did read that one of your considerations was doing the shelters out of town and supplying transportation to and from. My concern is, if that's actually moving forward, is if you pick up 10 in the morning or in the evening to take them there, does 10 come back in the morning, or does 15 or 20? If they're sleeping with others in Santa Ana, and they're saying, "Oh, San Clemente, we love it," and there's sandwiches that come every day, and does 20 come back, and are we actually busing more into our town? It's just something that I'm concerned about as far as, it's free transportation, is there limitations or anything? And I know that this is just me speaking, and I'm hoping that that's been considered. I know you guys are doing a wonderful job so far, everything that we've, you know, been trying to tackle, and it just seems like to remain compassionate and find a fine solution is really, you know, it's quite a nice dance, and I'm very proud of all of you for that. And I know that there's a lot of citizens who are trying to find a solution also or to help. Tonight, when I leave here, I'm buying an airline ticket for one, to go home. Tomorrow, I'm taking another one to work with me, and, you know, as a day laborer, I'm doing this because I've been out there doing outreach and trying to locate and recognize the ones who go, "Hey, I don't, I don't want to do anything," and the ones who say, "Please help me." So, that's what I'm doing personally and with the help of a lot of people. So, I'm only saying this so that I don't sound like I'm coming up here and going, "Fix this," without being informed and trying to really understand. Go into the canyons, go to the beach, poke your head in the tent and go, "Hey, how can I help?" But I see that you guys are doing that, and I'm just concerned about if this shuttle happens, can we somehow, or are we just, you know, inviting everybody to come here rather than just supplying a shelter? So, that was, I'm thinking out loud, and thank you, guys, you're doing a wonderful job. Okay.
Thank you, Daryl. Appreciate it.
James, can we address some of the questions that Eric asked, to the extent you recall them? If not, I'll take a shot at them, and you can correct me when I inevitably screw up. But on that particular issue, for Mr. McFann's question, if we did transport somebody to the armories, would we have a mechanism in place to ensure that the person we transferred in the morning is the person we're bringing back?
Our intention would be only to bring back the people that we took there from San Clemente. It would be a one-for-one, exact same person coming and going, and that would only be to, you know, so that we could enforce our camping ordinances. But we're still working through that with the county and whether we can use the armories as that option for enforcement of the anti-camping ordinances.
So, I know, and I raised that in the article, and Daryl, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that article and that information stemmed from a meeting that I had, gosh, what was it, about a month and a half ago now, James?
Yeah.
We met with Sheriff Barnes, Supervisor Bartlett, county staff, lots of folks, Susan Price, when she was still at the county, and we were informed that the armories were coming online in October. October 15th was the first 200 beds and another 200 beds in November. And I asked the question of Supervisor Bartlett if we had access to those beds in South County or if the SPA construct that the county had created would prohibit us from using those, and she said emphatically, "No, that wouldn't be the case," but we had access, all of the South Orange County cities did, and Mayor Joe Mueller from Dana Point was there with me, as was John Mark Jennings from Laguna Niguel, and I don't think Brian Marriott was there. But in any event, you know, I know that Sheriff Barnes expressed reservations at that meeting about whether or not that complied with Martin V. Boyzine, and I know we're still working through that. But to Daryl's point, to the extent that folks are willing to accept help, we are more than willing to offer it, and in fact, some of the vouchers that we're offering are folks in our encampment that were there, and were following the rules, and are local folks, and in fact, some of them have jobs. So, where there's a willingness to accept help, we are more than willing to offer that as a city, and I think we've made that clear from day one. What we're not willing to do is inherit the problem for the rest of South OC or elsewhere and provide housing for those folks. So, we're working towards that, but we think the armories are a good option, as do other folks in other places, and we're going to continue to press, because I think that's compliant with Martin V. Boyzine, a lot of other smarter people, and I think so as well. So.
Is there a motion? Any other comments or questions?
I have a quick comment about something I did last weekend. I attended the...
We don't have council comments on the agenda.
Oh, we don't have council comments, you're right. I didn't turn the page. Okay, then I'll save it for next council meeting.
And quickly, since Mayor Protim, I'm going to get used to that, Mayor Protim Ferguson brought it up, I am supportive of having Mercy House come back to give a report. I think we had asked about that several times, and I think we've discontinued largely that contract except for the monies we've given them, but it would be nice to know.
They're basically working under the county now, under the HEAP grant, and they're not working directly for the city. In fact, they, they're working at about 70% of what they were previously working, they were contracted with us for, but they're mostly working with the county, are working, acknowledging the county. They didn't even, we asked them to sign an amendment to their agreement, and they didn't sign that agreement. So, they're just basically with the county.
Okay, and so, if we invite them, and I guess if they refuse to come speak to us, so be it, but I'm willing and would like to hear a report of what success they've had down here, if we have support for that, so. Yeah, do we have any other support to have them come speak?
You know, I have trouble asking someone that doesn't work for us anymore to come. I mean, I think we've moved on from them. I just don't see what the point is of having them come.
So, I'll convey my point, and my point is, they did do work for us, and so, I think as stewards of public funds, it's nice to know whether they're doing their jobs.
Okay, you got me on that. Sure.
Yeah, a postmortem, as it were. I think we all felt that we could get better services elsewhere, and that's the direction we went, but I'd like to know what we got for the money we did spend.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll support that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight to the meeting of December 17th at 6:00 p.m.
No.
No.
At 4:30 p.m. in the chambers for the purpose of conducting interviews and making an appointment to the city representative of the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Oh, I didn't read my agenda.
And then, I put it down so I don't forget. And then, closed session, items will be considered at 5:00, and the regular business meeting will take place at 6:00.
Second. Thank you, City Clerk Joanne Bane.
Motion in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0. Passes 4-0.
(music)